Have a quorum. And remember, the microphones, although they look like they're way up there, are actually in your back pocket and they hear everything. First up on tonight's agenda, we have discussion of the regular agenda items and consent agenda items. We're going to go ahead and move down to consent agenda. Item one.
I don't have the agenda up right just yet. When we get to the bottom, I'd like to talk about that.
Then item two is the professional services agreement with Weaver and Tidwell LLC.
That's the one I was at.
Patrick, do you want to pull that one?
So I don't know if we have to pull it. I just, I'm just, I know we don't, I went through the documentation. We don't have a rotation policy for the secret looks like. I'm just curious about how long we've had them doing our books for us.
We've had them for 10 years.
For 10 years, okay. And we're going to have to put another two with this, right? Because it's another two-year option for three. Best practices is five-year rotation. And I wanted to put that to the group that we may want to consider rotating out. I know they do great work. I use my Castle Hills as well. But a five-year auto-rotation is just the best practices.
From, I'm just curious, best practices from?
For corporate and for municipalities, I understand it as well. I mean, you would probably know better than I would.
It's corporate, but I agree you should rotate.
There's nothing against those guys that are great to work and love working with. At Castle Hills with the audacity to do it there as well. But I'd put it to room that not do it this time. As this comes up again, I might want to think about rotating.
To do so, we would have to amend our council policy because we don't have rotation. So just FYI.
Okay. So that would be, that would be something we have to bring up on another.
Did you have something else to add, David? I'm sorry.
Our charter.
Charter, I'm, oh, it's our charter. I apologize, not policy. So you would actually have to change your charter, which would be an election.
You'd change the order?
I think our policy on...
I can pull that language, but I believe it's in both places, the policy and charter. Interesting.
Okay. That says we can't rotate.
It forces us, it says it doesn't, go ahead.
It doesn't require that we rotate.
Right, so I'm not suggesting we have to require the rotation. I'm suggesting we can rotate if we want to rotate. We don't have to require it, right?
Correct.
Do we go out? Yes, we went out for RFP. We had two, two companies and...
That's what I thought. There was two that came through.
Two that came through and best value or with the RFP, I think, looking at all of the factors, they considered that Weaver and Tidwell was the, was the selected one.
Really close on the small car. It was a little cheaper with the second one, but the experience went to Tidwell, I think.
Yeah, actually, although it was cheaper total, if you looked at the per, how many hours they were bidding for the work by hour, it was actually cheaper to go with Tidwell.
Well, I think that's something, if we want to bring that up, to have a conversation around, but it sounds like we need to kind of get a little bit deeper into the conversation. And then we have time or set aside for today. All right, so we're going to leave that on the consent agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Item three, professional services agreement between the city and studio outside. It's for the grand theater.
This is what we discussed in retreat, right?
Yes.
Before retreat.
Excited to see this one make a difference.
We talked about this at workshop.
Right. Yes, at workshop, yes. So we have in our budget for the construction for both of these projects, but this is, we have money available this fiscal year to start the design, so we can get a head start on it.
Item four, the studio outside for landscape in Lewisville Pocket Park. Item five, inter-local agreement between Capel and Lewisville. I've been told that this is kind of a cool way to work with another city because we've had to kind of split parking as one side and, you know, who gets city services and whatnot.
It's a good partnership.
It is a good partnership.
Capel's always been good to work with. Did you hear that? If you're listening, Capel. Item six, resolution preliminary service and assessment plan. We have to do this to be able to put the bid in place.
Right.
Item seven, draft fiscal year financial plan for Denko Area 911.
So I would like to pull this off the dissent. I'm not in support of having, as it lays out right now. I have concerns there are public outages, caused disruption of services, but there was four or five last year. I think we have one this year as well. So it's 7%, 7.7% on average, it looks like, is the compensation adjustment. I think it was 11% last year, all told. So I just like to know more about why we should support a 7.7% increase based upon the disruptions to service we had last year.
So we'll pull that and then there are some representatives from Denko 911 to answer questions.
Would you like to ask questions now?
You want to do that now or you want to do that in?
So I don't have questions. I put a statement out there, so I'm happy to hear counters to that about why I'm not going to support this.
Yeah, I'm there.
We need to have a regular session.
Regular session. But I appreciate them being ready.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so we'll pull item seven. Item eight, approval of resolution regarding encore. This is our annual dance.
Annual dance. It's always been a dance.
Item nine.
This was interesting.
So this is gas rate. Any questions or comments? Item 10, alternative standards to the UDC.
Does anybody ever go by the standard?
I'm sorry. But does anybody ever go by the standard?
We only see the ones that don't.
That's right.
This is true.
100% of the ones that come to you need an alternate standard.
That's right. 100%. I don't understand.
Item 11, alternate standards for Lake Point Drive. Item 12, annual service plan update. Item 13, ordinance to approve a negotiated settlement between the city and Atmos.
So I did have a question about this because we've got the Atmos one and we have the CoServe one that are in two different places in the process, I guess.
Right.
So is the CoServe one, I don't remember that one in the past. Is that a new one?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
This is the one I was talking about that was interesting.
Why aren't they on the same, why aren't they on the same schedule? Just curious.
I don't know, Erin, have a few...
I don't know exactly whether or not on the same schedule, but it just depends on when they, they have to have different deadlines, I think, when they, where their rate increases or whatever could be on the project.
Okay.
And it also depends on how much they push back when we, you know, the dance, I guess, and how large a part that is to negotiate it.
How fast we can get to a settlement.
Okay.
They probably all use the same legal counsel and they have to spread it out. All right, that's item 13. We do have a quarterly investment report council for you guys to look at. We won't be going over it, but it's in your packet. Any questions on that? We will have some closed session tonight for economic development. If there are no further questions on the agenda, we will go ahead and move into the economic development update. Y'all are welcome. Who's up?
Yeah, I can get this going. Okay. All right, so I'm going to be giving you an update on economic development projects. There.
They said, they said a few things about you too, the chairs.
Okay, so we're going to start with Old Town and then we're going to work our way around the city. So the first project we'll start with is Legacy Point and that's at Haleyian College. It's 97 single-family homes. They're cottage style, they're, they're a fully rental community and they are now complete as of May. And feel free to stop me at any point. I'm just going to go traveling around all the projects and you can call me, stop me at any point.
The whole point of this presentation is just to make sure you're, anything that we've touched economic development wise, if it's, if it's already a papered contract and it's open to the public, we're just going to give you an update on where they are in construction or, you know, if they've pulled permits, those types of things. And then we'll have one separate for executive session for anything that's confidential.
So the Whitlow is at College and Leonard, so that is approximately 420 multifamily units. So this is the Toll Brother project. They're going to have some retail-ready units on the ground floor. They're anticipating that they're going to be done by early 2024, even though their ED agreement actually allows them to go all the way through 2024, the end of '24. So they are, they're ahead of schedule. They're going to be pre-leasing in September, October-ish, with hopefully their first units being ready in December. Harris Seven is seven townhomes as well as private open space. They are under construction now. They have roughly two years to complete per the ED agreement, but they could be done sooner than that as well. And this is an extension of the, the other Harris project over there, Harris Four, where the developer did four townhomes as part of that project. So John Burns, they are still in the process of relocating their contract to last relocation to happen by the end of this year and they are on track for that. Deck on Main, three-story commercial building is going, construction's happening right across the street from us. If you walk outside, you'll see it. It's the first floor restaurant, retail space, second floor office, and the third floor with event space. It's going to have a balcony that's going to overlook the plaza as well and it's going to have public restrooms. They're anticipating that they will be complete in, in March of '24. And they're working with an agent to look at leasing out that, that space. And so they're working on that now. So the Salvation Army property, the city closed on that property earlier this month.
What about the ACs?
We have ACs.
Did they move the old ones back? We got them all in August.
Yes, we did. And so we closed early.
We almost closed with no ACs. We, we did an inspection and we asked for them to return the AC.
Well, one of, on one of the buildings, one of the AC units were stolen and they removed the other one to protect it. The other one was on the property somewhere, just wasn't hooked up. And so we got that all taken care of before we closed. I walked it myself right before. So we're going to be looking at doing some type of request for proposals or interest to decide what the highest and best use is going to be for that property.
We will also be utilizing it for Westford Lakes for parking problems and other uses.
So this is at 162 West Main. It was there doing white box finish out right now to it. And the council approved a both, the facade agreement for both the front and rear of the building. They are almost complete. They're just going through their punch list and they also have an agent that's going, helping them find a tenant to lease the space to. And I'll cover this one just because we didn't do ED updates last year, so Square on Main has been complete now for over, over a year, I think, at least by now. So it's event space, retail space, also a women-focused nonprofit. So we've all, I personally have been to a lot of events there. They, they host great events and, as well as the Chamber has hosted various events there as well. So Main and Melloskin has said 200, about 200 units. We'll have retail restaurant space on the ground floor, 175 public parking spots. They're anticipating that the first building will be, they'll start leasing the first building in, in October with the remainder in February. And they've hired a broker as well to, to help with leasing out that, the, the space on the ground floor there for the retail restaurant space. And they've started online leasing. So South Village is a mixture of both detached and attached townhomes as well as condo units. It's 91 in total. They have the remaining eight condo units that are, that are left. It's right behind the Awesome Center and they will be finishing those out before the end of the year.
Where is the parking going? That extra parking, where's that going?
To be shared with Awesome Center.
Okay.
So then Mel, Old Town at Mill and Purnell, again, under construction and they're making great headway. About 213 units. We'll have the, the Pocket Park, as I think you mentioned earlier, the design for that is on this council agenda. And they are going to be done by January. They are going to start pre-leasing soon. Yes, they anticipate that Building One will be done in about, in October and they've started to pre-lease that building. Building Two will come online in January and they will start to pre-lease that closer to the end of the year, I think. I think that's it for Old Town, so we're going to go north. So Lakeside Crossing, they have started to make some movement. They just did some completed excavation and they're going to start doing some sanitary water and storm improvements in October. They anticipate that they will, they'll complete horizontal development by around summer of next year. And so again, it'll include approximately 203 townhomes, also multifamily units, as well as retail and restaurant space.
Remember that horizontal improvements includes extending Summit Avenue, which will be a big, a big change to our infrastructure as well as Moccasin. So it's going to be a great transportation project for us as well.
Moccasin will go all the way through the service route, correct?
Looks like that.
That's it, yeah.
So 1951 Summit Entertainment Venue. So as you know, this was previously intended to be Gas Monkey. And so the, the owner of the site is no longer working with Gas Monkey and so they're in the process of rebranding. But we're still anticipated to have these components come together, the restaurant space, the outdoor performance theater, the renovation of the Pub Hut Golf Course and go-kart tracks. And we'll talk a little bit more about this in, later on in the meeting as well. And just say there, I think for now, they're still anticipating that they will be complete with Phase One, which is everything except for the amusement ride by early March of 2024. The Hamstons, this is the property that the city owns and back in late '21, we entered into agreement with Russell Glenn as the master developer for the site. And so we are set to potentially close at the end of this year. The developer is working to bring, to bring forward the uses that you see here, so the office, retail, hotel, restaurant space, potentially a grocery store as well. And I'll talk a little bit more about this as well later on tonight. So Heritage Trails and Towers, so the townhomes, Heritage Trails, that, that was complete, I believe, last year. And Heritage Trails, they have 282 multifamily units completed just earlier this summer as well. The last we checked back in June for the multifamily units, they were about 44% leased and 60, and, sorry, 44% occupied and 60% leased.
Summit has caused a storm. I'm still getting phone calls on Summit. You can send them to me. It's like, is there a car parked there? You don't slam your brakes on, there's not a car parked there.
Okay, so the Lake Project, so just again as background, the beginning of last year, we entered into an agreement with Matthew Southwest to be the, the developer consultant on Phase One, which is master planning for what Lake redevelopment is going to look like. And so, I heard that too.
That direction is there. From the advisors over there.
So, so we entered into that agreement and since then, we've been working with Matthew Southwest on developing a, a master plan for redevelopment of our lake area. And I'm going to actually pull this up in a separate document because it's a little bit hard to see.
Yes, it is.
This is a preliminary sketch that we've just been working on and, and working with the Corps preliminarily on.
Yeah, so I'll go over some, there's a whole legend here with some of the uses, but I'll, I'll go high level on it. So obviously we're keeping some of the, a lot of natural space, natural open space, trails, new launches and those types of things, public parking. We're anticipating that we will have a hotel here as well as potentially a restaurant. There is a, 11 here is a hotel annex that could be various things, another gathering space, patio, green space, as well as potentially suites. We have the area here, you can see where it says beach, potentially some beach access here and maybe some in front of the hotel as well. Down here, another restaurant and potentially stores while for, you know, as you're out there camping and those types of things, you may need, need some supplies and things of that nature.
And air conditioner?
Yeah, that too. And then we're going to have some anticipating cabins here that would be off the water, so they'll be elevated off of the ground to keep them clear of, of the water. So anticipating some of that here as well as what else?
How many piers do we have? Fishing piers? Quite a few. You see all those little black ones, black things sticking out to the water?
One, two, three, four. Five. Well, yeah, six, seven, eight.
Yeah.
Nine, 10, 11.
Six monkeys.
Oh, yes, okay, good.
You got big ones and little ones. There's at least a dozen in there.
So of course there'll also be restroom, shaded area, natural play areas and, and other uses. So as Claire mentioned, we're still in the process of, of fine-tuning this plan and once we do that, we'll bring it forward for, to the, the core for conceptual approval. And I'll also talk quickly about the day side. Stacy, you want to talk about it?
Yeah, so, yeah, this has been kind of been on hold for the last 18 months as we've got the Marina Development Area up to kind of a common, a common point in planning. And we kind of held off because we didn't really know what we would be moving forward in terms of the fishing barge and what elements on the, the day use southern side needed to be incorporated into the Marina side and vice versa. And I think we've kind of settled that most things will stay as is, with the exception that those premium cabins will move up to the, the northern portion where the Marina is. And that this would become more on the line of, you know, that you would see out in an estate park where you might have a, small shelters that you put your, your campsite next to so you can get some respite from the cold or the, the wind, but there wouldn't be cabins, so to speak. And so we're working our way through that. And then, so we have started this process back up, looking at how we might need to alter some of the programmatic elements in here. And so as we work with the Marina side, we'll be, you know, working towards bringing this back to y'all, taking it to the core, but also starting to prioritize how we'll spend our bond money that already exists to start improvements.
And last thing I'll note here is that we really want to improve access. And so you kind of see the flow, what the flow of traffic would be to be able to get to all the amenities here and then travel down to the day side. Thanks.
I really appreciate that there's roundabouts incorporated all through here just because of the amount of traffic that we're going to have.
Any more questions on this one? So and just as a reminder on what happens after Phase One. So after we get to the point where we've received conceptual approval from the Corps, we will then move on to Phase Two. And Phase Two will be then entering to agreement with a developer at risk, which could be Matthew Southwest. Or if the, we both don't agree that we want to move into Phase Two, then we would then take everything that we did in Phase One and put out a new RFP to get a developer to then make all of those things happen.
Have you got a timeline on Phase One?
We're getting close to being done. Well, I say that. We're getting close to submitting to the Corps.
Yes.
That says a lot.
That says a lot. Unknown when that part of it will, will be over, but we're, we're making good headway and we're hoping that, that we'll keep to, to where we need to be.
I will say that the preliminary input from the Corps has been very positive because there was a lot, as you can see, in the past prior pictures, is a return to nature out there. So there's a lot of mitigation in areas, grasses, prairie land, trees being planted, which is a big plus in there.
So I assume that with, when we get into Phase Two is when we're going to discuss how this is going to be phased, right? Because it's not going to be all, everything's not going to be cornered at the one, in the one, right?
Yeah, so with Phase Two, one, we have to have the developer on board and then we've got to figure out the phasing. The financing on that's going to be important too, obviously. And then on top of that, we've got, you know, current operators out there and all of the issues that result are related to that, which I think we'll have another briefing later, maybe next month on that.
And that's also, some of that is part of Phase One, but will, may change a little once you get into Phase Two and you have someone who is actually going to move forward and do the development. So part of what Matthew Southwest will do is they will suggest phasing. They will talk about the different types of funding sources that we could potentially tap into or develop or can tap into. So not just city funds, state, federal, across the board. And so those are some of the things we are going to be looking at in Phase One, but just may change, especially if, let's say Matthew Southwest is not the developer on Phase Two, just ensuring that whoever we get on board can adhere to those to, to the phasing that, that we talked about in, in the first part of this, so.
And then we just got to, we got to advertise that because that's going to be, that's going to be a real big deal.
We better get that phase back.
I'd get the Corps a stamp of approval.
I just remembered before I was on council, a certain young council member was up in the hotel up there and now that person's mayor now, not so young, so.
He's not young yet.
Why did you choose that house? Why did you come around swinging?
It's a good question.
Okay, so we're going to move down south. So 280 East Corporate is an agreement that y'all proofed sometime last year. And it is an office warehouse building, approximately 117,000 square feet. And they do, they have completed the shell and they, they have a tenant that is going to be finishing out the, the tenant improvements within, inside. And we anticipate that they will be, they may actually be done with that this month.
And that's one tenant for the whole thing?
One tenant, mhm. And so it's SMS InfoCom, they're a logistics company. They do refurbishment of electronics and...
Have they taken both buildings or?
No, so just the, just the larger building?
Yeah, just the larger, and the smaller one was originally going to be like a neighborhood market or?
Yes, I think originally that was the plan and that was not...
Reduced down their incentive because they weren't able to do that.
Yeah. Oh, while we are here, we'll talk quickly about the Palladium Project on Rock Grove. So last year, the council approved a lot... So last year, the Council approved a letter of support for tax credits. And we found out last month that they did in fact receive the award for the tax credit. So we will be getting some more affordable housing. It's about 90 units and only 33 of those units will be market rate, so. So last year, y'all also approved the Wells Walker Agreement. They are under construction and just reminder, that's the data center. It'll be approximately 146,000 square feet and they are anticipating that they are going to be on track for the end of next year for completion. So we talked a little bit about mall redevelopment at Retreat earlier in the year. And so we are still working through that process of master planning for mall redevelopment. We have been in contact with the owners and we are in the process of refining the plans. And from then, we can, we can move forward and hopefully, what we're hoping is that the end of this, we will have a draft of a PD, a plan development to then replace the agreement that all the owners are contractually obligated to. Instead of, so instead of relying on that agreement, they can go away, we can open it up and it will allow for redevelopment to occur there and for other uses to be able to come into play here that is not currently allowed.
How many owners are there?
Three.
That's pretty good.
And the owner that purchased the vast majority of the mall last year from the Music City Mall folks, or from, sorry, from the, yes, it was the folks that named it Music City Mall. So they own the vast majority of it. Dillard's owns Dillard's and then the Zion Market folks also own the former Macy's. So, so that's it.
This can't come fast enough. This is such a sad.
Me too.
When we got down here in '99, that was the place. I mean, it was a great bust little place and now it breaks my heart to go by there.
Well, I feel, I feel good about it. We meet with the owners, we meet, I meet with them quite often. And whenever they're in town, the main point of contact, whenever they're in town from California, they always stop in and meet with us as well. And so we're in constant communication with them and we're moving in the right direction.
They've hired an architect, they're working through kind of revision to the plan we put forward. You know, there's going to be, I know that there's, residential's easy to plug in there. We're going to be holding ground on the mixture of uses, so that's where we are.
Keep that middle atrium, it's, it's.
Keep them combat?
Yeah.
You have to.
Yeah, that's historical and I think it's great, yeah.
Well, I don't know about historical. I used to play king of the flag there.
I'm only 23, so.
Okay.
Ronnie historical.
Dinosaur. And so the only thing I wanted to mention here for Crown Center is that, so back when we were talking about, a couple meetings ago, talking about our TERS annual reports, we talked about one of the, one of the draws that the developer made was for a corporate lease pursuant to their agreement. And that was for Crossmark. And so they, they build the entire building, it's probably 80,000 square feet and they have 320 employees. And so I just, that was the only point I wanted to make about Council Hills.
So just to remind Council, so the agreement, we have an economic development agreement with the Brights as they, as they build out there. So you've met, you've basically set groundwork for, we will give you an economic, automatically, TERS dollars will go towards economic development if you meet these certain criteria. So you're not seeing them come back to you, one offs, but they are happening. So this is why we were making sure you were aware of where some of those TERS dollars are going to.
I think there is one more I wanted to cover in this. So ALOFT here, so the economic development agreement was extended to ALOFT for complete, for construction to start in December of this year. And so we've been in talks with them and just watching, waiting to see when they're going to start construction. But it can go, the completion date in the agreement is not until 2026. And just a reminder, this was going to be about 62,000 square feet with 120 rooms.
Can you point where it is?
There you go. Maybe it'll.
There's another hotel that they're building over there.
Those two houses of ill repute that face each other. Oh, sorry. That's what they are.
Got to take a tour with Ronnie, just like.
You need to. Come on, I'll show you some stuff. I'll even take you down in the tugs. Are there any questions on any of the projects that you went over tonight so far?
Got a question, not on one of the projects, and it may actually not be under your purview, but there is a Dollar Tree or one of those dollar shops that ended up going bankrupt or not being built out and we've been having some challenges with. Can anybody kind of?
Oh, on Bell Air?
Yeah. It's not our economic development.
We don't have a.
You can't.
I'm pretty sure it's a pushpin, just a bit further on me.
Is it? Hoggie's a pushpin.
I'd love an update at some point, not here.
And so the only other ED updates I have for y'all are two things, which would be the contract that we have now with Catalyst Commercial. So they're helping us with retail recruitment. I have tasked them with mostly focusing on Old Town and then on the Northern Gateway as well. So using them as a more targeted approach to bring folks to the table. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that we started a new interactive business directory recently as well. And so it's a way for the businesses to stay connected to the community. Business can go on there and they can update their, they can update their information and they can also even throw on coupons and things of that nature that, you know, they want the public to be aware of. So, so we are encouraging all the businesses to go check out their information and update it if it needs to be.
Y'all are doing amazing work, really appreciate it. I know there's a lot of plates spinning and we just, you know, kind of keep making hay while sun shines. Appreciate you all and I'm all you're doing.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? All right, well, it looks like we've got the PD here to talk about our nuisance abatement programs. So Chief.
Yep, thank you, Mayor and Council. We're here to give you my update on the nuisance abatement program. This is basically 3.0, the third iteration of this. Chief Clements has done a lot of work on this, so he's going to be presenting to you today. If you have any questions along the way, please stop us and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just going to use the keyboard. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Chief said, we're going to, yeah. He's going to be my clicker for me. We're going to brief update on the nuisance abatement program. So we're going to go through our authorities on force of laws, the kind of the history of the program for those that may have been around to see it. Our proposed pathway forwards and changes that we want to make and then obviously feedback from y'all. So our authority to enforce nuisance abatement properties come from our nuisance abatement statutes, which says that the court can close down properties for a year if a property is being used for base of operations for criminal activity. A lot of the times when property owners are faced with potential litigation, they decide to work with us proactively to reduce crime on their properties, which that way it never goes to litigation, we're able to solve it before it gets to that point.
So you have a definition of ongoing criminal activity, like over six months, over nine months?
We'll get to that.
Okay.
Towards the end, yeah. It's really not technically defined, but it's our program is how we're holding orders. These are the two sections in the code that give us the authority to enforce nuisance abatement, where the statute is located. So the Texas alcohol beverage code, the civil remedies, excuse me, civil practices and remedies code. This is where the statutes work by holding property owners accountable for what happens on their properties. And these are some examples of what nuisance crimes are according to the state statute. So what you won't see here is you won't see code violations. So technically, code violations are not considered nuisance crimes by state statute. So we're not allowed to put properties into our program just based on code violations. So we have to have something else besides that. That's not to say that code violations may not be part of our crime reduction agreement because those things are going to go hand in hand. The more code violations you have, it seems like the more crimes you have on your property. So as they enter into these agreements with us, part of those things is to bring your property up to code, do all these different things that we request you to do.
I have a question. What about noise? That isn't polyphile under this, right?
Okay.
Now, if they're yelling obscenities, it does. But if it's just loud music, that doesn't count.
No, that would not be under the definition of nuisance crimes, no.
So the Texas Attorney General has a guide for municipalities that are moving through the process for nuisance abatement. One thing that they always recommend is that the PD gives the property owners the opportunity to work with us before we go straight to a lawsuit. So what you'll see here is we've identified nuisance properties. They suggest we send a notification to the property owner to have them comply or request their compliance with our crime reduction strategies, which leads to annual monitoring and reporting. If the property owners are unwilling to cooperate with us and they have, they meet the requirements of the statute that we're able to file lawsuits on those properties. So this is a quick overview of where we've come with the program. So back in 2017 is when we first really started researching this topic, based on the high crime rates we had with our hotels. In 2018, it was presented to the Council and then we had our kind of initial beginning of the program in May of that year. And what we did was we took the highest number of nuisance crimes at a property for over the previous four years and they were the ones that was kind of our trial case that went into the program, which was, ended up being Budget Suites of America. So you can see here, they were, their total nuisance crimes for their property before your period was 152. You can kind of see where they fall on that scale. They're much higher than any of the other properties that we identified as nuisance properties. This was an example of the initial crime prevention or crime reduction agreement that we gave Budget Suites. It just kind of outlines, it was, there was 50 some odd items on this agreement that they had to agree to. This is just an example of a few of them. So they had to, you know, support all efforts to stop criminal activity, call 911 and report things, post signs. And if you drive around some of these nuisance properties, you'll actually see these signs hung up and those were because of this crime prevention agreement. And then requiring government issued ID for people that stay there and requiring background checks on residents and those kind of things. So it was a really all encompassing agreement.
And this is where you would see some of the code type issues. We would put that into the document that they take care of fences and disrepair graffiti and things like that.
Let me ask a question about that. So the language is a little soft, you know, should, should, should. Is that legal for me? You can't say shall or will or something like that?
I'm going to take y'all in the back.
Why, a big question is, do they do all these things, I guess? Because it looks like they're not contractually obligated to, they should do it. Do they do all these things?
So I don't know that this is a legal document or not, I'll leave that to Liz. But what we try to do is work with the property owner and get their commitment to do these things and that's what they have.
Okay, sure enough.
Mayor, when we're done, I'd like to take y'all into closed for attorney consultation on this item.
So the partial implementation in 2018, you can kind of see, we had a little small reduction in nuisance crimes from 2017 to 2018. And then the overall, total overall crimes on that property also went down. In 2019, we changed the metric for inclusion into the nuisance abatement program. Like I said, initially, we went with the highest number of nuisance crimes and they were the one in the program. But to include more properties and to include smaller properties that had a lesser number of crimes, we went to a crimes per unit, excuse me, methodology, which meant we took the total number of crimes on the property divided by the number of units and then the total number of crimes that were committed on the property and divided by units. And if that, if that total together was 1.0 or higher, they would be placed in the program. So from that, we saw, we included some apartment complexes and Park Lake Apartments was one of the ones we saw. Quite a drastic reduction in the number of nuisance crimes from 2018 to 2019. So they went from 40 on their property down to eight in 2019. The biggest thing we see with properties is that the managers or owners are absent, they don't really care what goes on. So when you bring them on to the program and say, this is what we need to do, and they get a new property management in, it's because they just stayed in Park Lake, changed their partner manager at that point. And they brought a new manager and suddenly they cleaned up the property. So that was what we see, what we see a lot of times when we put those, put those properties. We were poised to enter suburban and Econ Lodge and then COVID-19 happened. So unfortunately with COVID-19, we reduced almost all of our field services to essential services only. So we didn't, we didn't really do anything with the nuisance abatement program because really we were trying to limit contact with people as much as we could. Along with that, our transition to our current CAD product or RMS product doesn't give us the ability to research our nuisance crimes very easily. So we've just got to do it by hand, but to each property, there's not really a backend way of looking at the data. So moving forward with our new CAD product, that can all be done writing a simple query, thank you. And we get all that information in a spreadsheet and we can literally go through it with an analyst and then figure out which properties need to go into the program.
Yeah, if y'all will remember, we're on the Pro Suites version right now and we're upgrading to the Enterprise. This was after Pro Suites did not meet their obligations by contract.
How much longer we have till we're on that system, Chief?
We're still looking at a November go-live at this moment. We have recently lost a project manager, so we're waiting to see how that may affect us moving forward.
So moving forward, we're again using a team approach with property owners to make sure that they, try to bring them to voluntarily comply with our crime reduction strategies, overall creating a safer and viable for the public and then which would, should ultimately reduce calls for service, reimbursement personnel. The biggest thing that we're proposing to change is not just hotels and apartments, but including all properties in the city that are, that we consider nuisance property and creating crime prevention agreements with those property owners to reduce their crime.
Love that.
And this change resulted in us needing to modify the crimes per unit because obviously a residence would be one unit, so we needed to modify that.
But for short-term rentals and that type of thing, that's, that's going to be, I think, an important part of it, we can capture it.
If it has those crimes.
Yeah.
So as Chief said, propose changes, getting rid of the per-unit metric so we can incorporate more property types. And then again, including all properties in the city that have a nuisance problem. Moving from annual oversight to quarterly oversight. More follow-up and day-to-day with the property owners and then moving the program oversight down in our organization so that there's more hands-on with the properties.
Quick question. So the follow-up with the property owners, is that going to be via email or are you going to have an officer that's assigned to talk to these property owners?
So depending on which part of the program they're in, we'll go through those in just a second. It'll be assigned to their neighborhood resource officer as the primary person that's going to have the day-to-day contact. We'll have some contact if they get into a formal program or a formal agreement. You know, just got to give them the expectations and stuff, but then that's, that will be moved down to command stuff down the line. So our moving forward four-step approach, early intervention, and we'll go through these in more detail in just a second, I just want to give you an overview. So early intervention, consideration of entrance into the nuisance abatement agreement, formal entry into the nuisance abatement and then a nuisance abatement lawsuit. So starting at the bottom for early intervention, we will run quarterly reports for every property in the city, looking for which properties have less than four, excuse me, more than four nuisance crimes in a quarter and under 16 nuisance crimes in a rolling 12-month period. They will receive a letter that says your property has been identified as a possible nuisance and then to reach out to the neighborhood resource officer with some crime prevention strategies, crime reduction strategies to try to get those, those properties back down where they need to be. And then again, partnering with the NROs and that unit to make sure that they're doing what they're doing and then we continue to monitor those properties. And if they, they never hit that 16 nuisance crimes in a 12-month period, but they stay, they, they're. their property owners are cooperative and they're doing what they need to be doing, they would never go into a formal program. If they, if we run a quarterly report and we have a nuisance, we have more than four nuisance crimes, but in that 12-month rolling period, they're up to over 16, they would be moved up to consideration of entry into a formal nuisance abatement agreement. And what that means is the, the NROs will prepare a report for command staff that says we've done all of these things with this property, here's all the crimes that they've had, and then they will present it to the chief and the command staff to decide if we're going to put them into a formal agreement. At that time, we would either draw up a nuisance abatement agreement for them or they would, they would stay in early intervention.
I have a question.
Yes.
These are all the crimes they've had. It's not the calls for service, it's the crimes. So it's the crimes that have been cited by citation?
Or arrest.
Or arrest, okay. Not conviction?
Not conviction.
Okay.
Yeah, and really you could, we could throw in reports too. So they might not make an arrest, but if somebody reports X, Y, and Z, and that is substantiated, it may not lead to an arrest or prosecution, but it could be a substantial report.
Okay.
Now, someone makes a report for, let's say prostitution, and we do an investigation and say that didn't happen here, that wouldn't be counted towards their nuisance crime.
Right, right.
So if they're in a formal nuisance abatement agreement, that means they've had over 16 nuisance crimes in a rolling 12-month period. Then we get their formal notification from Chief Dever that says you are in this program, and here's your crime prevention strategies you have to hit. That was that form that we saw a little while ago. If they are cooperative, they sign that agreement, we monitor that property quarterly. The NROs will probably have more frequent contact with them to make sure that they're doing what they should be doing, and then we would move along. At some point, they're either going to be taken out of the program because they've met their goals, which would be to reduce their nuisance crime. They'll continue in the program, so we'll do six-month reviews with command staff to determine what the, whether they're going to move it through the program. Or it could end up in a lawsuit. The caveat with the lawsuit is though, that they have to have six arrests for the same nuisance crime on their property in order for us to be fully in a lawsuit. So if we never get that, we would never get to a lawsuit on those properties.
What is, by the time they get the letter, is there a deadline on the letter? Like there is code enforcement? You need to contact us back? Can we set those down?
We would work with legal to draft a letter. It would be similar to what we've done in the past, and it would be certified mail to the property owner. And as Chief Clements mentioned earlier, what we commonly saw previously were, and I'll use Park Lake as the example, the ownership lived in New York. They had never even set foot on this property. So once they received the letter, they realized there was a problem. They came down, realized it was a problematic manager, and turned things around.
So our next steps, we're finalizing our program by writing a policy for the PD, finishing up brochures for businesses, putting the finishing touches on our program manual. Our new CAD RMS system that Chief already talked about going live hopefully in November. Our proposed GIS developer position is going to help with the backend code writing to pull these, the data out of the system. And then our crime analyst, who will do the deep dive into the data to make sure that the crime that is reported at the location actually occur at that location. So an example would be if I make a traffic stop on 200 business and somebody pulls into Budget Suites and I arrest them for drugs, technically the location of the offense is Budget Suites, but that wouldn't count towards Budget Suites nuisance crimes because they, because they pulled into that location. So we don't want unfairly giving them an extra nuisance crime if we, if it doesn't apply there. And then finally, the implementation of the program.
So with that, we just wanted to solicit your feedback, see what you thought about our recommendations and any other ideas.
I like the way you're fine-tuning things as you go along. We started with a, we started with a certain policy and found out that it needed tweaking and so, and I really appreciate that you're doing that.
Where did the metric 16 come from? Is that just based on past experience? Cause that, how did we come up with 16?
So that, we looked at other agencies and what they're doing, and that was pulled from another, another city's measures of how they determine nuisance properties.
I would just say, as we kind of fine-tuned it into the neighborhoods, that we have the NROs go out and talk to the neighborhoods as well, because they're probably able to identify what the potential nuisance addresses are. But so everybody's informed of what was going on, and they can be a part of it and help. That's all I have. Sounds great.
No, yeah, give people, empower people to use the app, whatever they need to do. Am I right in assuming that a lot of this is contingent on the new software suite getting stood up?
That is correct.
So if you could just kind of keep the tabs on that, because my anticipation is that we might, you know, once that really starts to hit, that's going to jar some folks, and we might start getting some additional phone calls and whatnot, which is fine. I got no issue with that. I just want to know as soon as that happens. Appreciate it, chief. Good job.
Like I'm coming.
And I think our attorney would like to have us go into closed session on this one for just a moment.
Presume it to Texas Department of Commerce Section 551.371.
271, okay. I thought maybe it was 730.
It is 7:01 PM, and we're calling this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order regular session. We do have a quorum. Starting off tonight, we have our invocation with Mayor Pro Tem Meredith.
Please join me in a moment of silent contemplation. Thank you.
Join me in the pledge of the American in Texas flag.
We pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, under God, one and indivisible.
So we do have a proclamation tonight, and it is regarding the United Way of Denton County. And whereas the United Way of Denton County celebrates 70 years of impact across Denton County in 2023, and whereas by working together with supporters and collaborators across Denton County, United Way of Denton County improves access to education, economic mobility, and health and mental health for over 42,000 residents annually. Whereas the United Way of Denton County leads the effort to close gaps and open opportunities for every person in Denton County and works with a network of nonprofits, governments, businesses, and donors to respond to our neighbors' immediate needs and seek out better solutions for larger community-wide issues. Now therefore, ITJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as Live United Month and proudly join United Way of Denton County in calling on all residents of Lewisville, Texas to give, to give, advocate, and volunteer as we live united to build a healthier Denton County for all of us. Proclaim this the 21st day of August 2023. And folks, if you are looking for an organization to volunteer, to donate, to find out what organizations are in Denton County that you can participate in, United Way of Denton County is an amazing way to get started. They do tremendous work, and I see several folks here in the audience that have served on boards with me, have been at events, have donated and given their time and treasure to United Way and to its service organizations that it deals with. We are in a much better place because of the United Way, so I want to thank them all. Is there anybody from United Way tonight? Are you guys here for that? Okay, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Awesome. No, well, you know, tell Gary, tell Gary he's got his, get his clock set ahead. It's okay. So, and if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself and if you have any, any words to say?
Yes, I'm Nancy Rodems. I've been a board member of the United Way of Denton County for the last nine years, and everything you said is exactly right. But we want to thank the mayor, the city council, the city of Lewisville for all your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'm going to introduce myself as well. I'm Jan Rogg, but I sit on the board for United Way for Denton County. And truthfully, our successes are measured by the efforts of the county. And thank you to Lewisville for, not only for this proclamation, but for the support through the Capitol campaigns. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
There you go.
All right. Thank you very much.
And, and to be clear, a little extra thank you because the city staff actually supports the United Way through that Capitol campaign that she just mentioned, that Nancy just mentioned, and we want to thank you all for doing that because I know it's, everybody has a lot of things they have to spend money on, but being able to give back to the community, it's an amazing way that you all do that. So thank you. Item D, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have a couple of ecomments, one from Ainsley Stelling regarding Dallas's short-term rental ban on single-family residential zone neighborhoods, giving a couple of recommendations. Counsel, you should have this in your packet. I also have an email from Mr. Gary Ferguson, also with concerns regarding short-term rentals and giving references to other cities that are restricting short-term rentals. I also have here present, it looks like Mr. Jeffrey Woods, here to speak in support on short-term rentals. And Mr. Wood, if you would state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Gilmore, my name is Jeff Woods. My address is 1001 Fourth Park Drive in Lewisville, Texas. And I'm here on behalf of the Texas Neighborhood Coalition, the Lewisville Chapter. We're just here to make an awareness that we want to establish a relationship with the city to, in place ordinances on short-term rentals and how they affect members that live in, residents that live in the, in these areas that do have the short-term rentals. And we've been providing the city with some data and some feedback as well. So we're just present tonight in order to just address that we want to work closely with the city in establishing some ordinances or rules, regulations, whatever it may be.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the input.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Yes, sir.
So, I just want the context for the conversation. I think you, I believe you said that was in support of short-term rentals or support
Supporting restrictions on short-term rentals.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you so much.
My apologies. Thank you for the clarification. And I've had a chance, we've spoken with a lot of these folks with emails and whatnot, so I know staff is aware, so appreciate that, and we're working through that. Next up, consent agenda, item E. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and being acted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, speaker Carter's e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City secretary, do we have any requests for removal?
No further ecomments, but there is an item that is going to be pulled for tonight's agenda.
And I have, Councilmember Kelly, did you want to pull an item for tonight? And which item?
I would like to pull the Denton, the Denko 911 item, please.
Mr. Mayor, for reference, that's regular session item number seven.
Session item number seven?
Consent item number seven.
Consent item number seven. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item seven.
Motion to approve consent agenda, agenda items one through six and eight through nine as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for all of the consent agenda excluding item seven. Was that the motion? Was all of them excluding item seven?
Six.
I missed the eight through nine bit.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying, or we got a, we got a vote? Here we go. There's my vote. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. All right. We're going to move back to item seven off the consent agenda, which has been polled for comment. Item seven, approval of a resolution of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas approving the draft fiscal year 2024 financial plan of the Denko Area 911 District pursuant to the Texas Health and Safety Code, Chapter 772, as amended and provide an effective date. As it is July 13th, 2023, regular, or at its July 13th, 2023 regular meeting, the Denko Area 911 District Board of Managers unanimously approved the fiscal year 2024 draft financial plan pursuant to section 772.309 of the Texas Health and Safety Code. Denko Area 911 is required to provide a draft of its annual financial plan to all participating jurisdictions for review and comment period. Staff performed a review of the draft financial plan and is not recommending changes to the plan as presented. But we do, I think counsel has comments.
So in, is there somebody here to speak on behalf of that organization? Fantastic, thank you. So I was, I was, if you could please elaborate on it, I saw a 4.7% cost of living increase and a 3% merit increase. Could you talk to me about how that, how that was decided upon? Is that everybody? What, what would go into that?
Yes, the, the.
And I apologize. Would you be able to state your name and?
I'm sorry, I'm Greg Valentine, deputy, or executive director of the Denko Area 911 District. Apologize, Mayor.
No worries.
The two different components make up that total salary increase amount in the recommended or proposed budget. The first is a merit pool. Our board has traditionally approved a, about a 3% merit pool annually. That is not an automatic across-the-board increase for everyone. That's the amount of the pool that is then awarded to employees based on performance. Every employee within our organization receives an annual written performance evaluation by their supervisor or manager. Some employees get 0% and some may get more than 3%, but that's the, the amount of, of the pool. The 4.7% is the CPI as reported by the Department of Labor in May, when our budget was prepared to present to the board. We normally use the CPI in February, but it was much higher this year. So we looked at, at March, and it had come down a little bit. April had come down a little bit more, and May actually even a little bit more. So we recommended the CPI amount, which is what we always do at the staff level. We don't, we don't manipulate that number. We recommend that to, to the board for approval. And our board has always taken the, the position that the compensation plan for the district is intended to keep turnover as low as we can keep it because we have such a small staff. And with the small numbers that we have, in some cases, if we lose one employee, we lose an entire department. So that can have a very adverse impact, so we do try to stay very competitive in salary ranges.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think my overall concern is that, and you know, rough year last year, we had four or five, maybe not outages, but certainly things didn't perform as they were expected to. You can call them unintended backup exercises, you know, redundancy exercise, whatever you want to call them. So that, that's my concern, and I don't want to really trickle that down through staff, but I think as the executive board, how, what are your thoughts about the compensation increases for the executive board based upon the, those outages we had last year? And I believe in the, even beginning of this year, we had one as well. Can you talk to me about that, please?
Yes, the, the events last year, 2022 was, was a bad year for the service degradation issues that we had. And I reported to, to this council in late December where we outlined the issues involved in each of those three service degradation issues, which were our vendors. And you know, there was no negligence at the staff level. Those vendors are national vendors that operate enterprise systems, and we did hold them accountable. In fact, required that they come in person to a board meeting, and they had to report out on, on what happened, why it happened, and what steps they had taken to ensure that it would not happen again. One of those issues that occurred was a software bug in a Cisco operating system that was previously unknown to Cisco prior to our event. Obviously Cisco's not a fly-by-night company. There's really nothing at the staff level that could have been done to prevent that from occurring. Once it was recognized, we did get the attention that we needed from Cisco to get the fix in place. And since that event last November, there has not been any service degradation to. to the point of requiring that, well, actually, the systems have worked flawlessly locally. We did have a vendor issue a few weeks ago, where there was a routing key that was inadvertently removed by a vendor entrado that resulted in some calls being routed to the sheriff's office that should have been routed to the police department. No call was lost. No data was lost. We transfer calls every day in the district. The backup systems worked perfectly there.
Okay. So, we talked about, you mentioned vendors. Is this the same vendor over and over again? Is this four different vendors with different situations?
It's not. The Cisco issue was the only, the software bug was the only issue that we've had with Cisco. We had a Frontier card failure in July of last year, over a year ago now, that, as I explained in December when we met, the issue was that card would fail and recover so quickly that as the backup systems would go into face, into place, the primary systems would recover. And it wasn't, it was happening so quick, backups couldn't come on before primary systems attempted to recover. So, that was Cisco Frontier. And then Verizon, who is our main 911 network provider, had an issue with a technician, an engineer entering a duplicate IP address into the network. That was a human error. Shouldn't have happened. Happened as a result of an upgrade that we were going through. You may remember in December, when we talked, we talked about the SD-WAN upgrade, that if that upgrade had been in place, the first two incidents, well, the Frontier incident would have been mitigated, and it would not have occurred. The duplicate IP address was issued by the Verizon engineer as a result of that upgrade that was being implemented and has now been implemented.
And you've implemented change control to try to prevent this from happening in the future? So, when you say somebody implemented something, that implies to me that there wasn't a change control process in place? Or maybe you can talk about your change control process?
Yeah. The change control place was actually within Verizon internally. And they, while they don't give us visibility to those, they have assured us that that is in place. And they've assured us that in writing and in person to our board.
How do these, how do this, how does this service level compare with other 911 agencies in Texas?
You know, I don't have statistical data to present on that empirically. Just what we know is that we actually are better than most places throughout the state of Texas and nationally. But I'm hard-pressed to say a percentage at this point. And, you know, lots of times, 911 systems across the country won't necessarily advertise when they have an issue. But we know from discussions that we have with our colleagues that there are issues in the systems nationally. What I think really sets us apart is the levels of redundancy and backup that we have in place that unfortunately, through 2022 and that upgrade, just experienced some situations that it couldn't handle.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for being here and your time. I appreciate it. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item seven.
I moved, I moved to approve item seven as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item F, Regular Hearing. Consideration of an alternative standard to the Lewisville Unified Development Code regarding tree mitigation related to a proposed office warehouse development located on the north side of McKenzie Street, approximately 100 feet west of Red Bud Street and Zoned Light Industrial District LI, as requested by Kyle Brusdin, EKB Design Works, on behalf of Lucky's Barber Shop, the property owner. McKenzie Industrial Park is a proposed office warehouse development. The applicant met with development staff several times, beginning in January 2022, prior to the revisions to the tree preservation requirements being adopted with the Unified Development Code. The applicant did not submit this project until December 19th, 2022, after the adoption of the UDC. The applicant proposes to make a voluntary right-of-way dedication to facilitate future street reconstruction and realignment along McKenzie Street, which will impact landscaping and exterior building material requirements. The applicant is requesting an alternative standard to waive the required mitigation for hackberry trees on the site and to allow tree mitigation fees to be based on the original site layout before the voluntary right-of-way dedication. Alternative standards related to landscaping and exterior building materials will be brought forth once the final plat, reflecting the voluntary right-of-way dedication is filed with Denton County. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, seven to nothing, on August 15th, 2023. It's recommended that the City Council approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
I just had a quick question.
We do have, we have Mr. Lutke available for questions.
Yeah, I do have a quick question. This is about hackberry trees, right? So, I mean, usually, in the tree ordinances that I've seen, hackberry trees are not protected trees. But this is just because they're of a certain size. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah. I'm good with it. I moved to approve the item, to approve the alternative standard as set forth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item 11, Consideration of Two Alternative Standards Associated with Architectural Standards for Proposed Industrial Building on Approximately 3.0524 Acres Located at 1960 Lake Point Drive, Legally Described as Waters Ridge Edition Phase II, Lot 2A-R, Block 1, Zoned Light Industrial District, as requested by Douglas Weaver, Weaver Engineering LLC, on behalf of the owner, RPGC Lake Point LLC. 23-06-6-ALT STD is the case number. The owner proposes to construct a 44,000-square-foot industrial building on a vacant property located within the Interstate Highway 35 East Corridor Overlay District. The following two alternative standards related to architecture have been requested to reduce the brick-and-stone requirement from 80% brick or stone to 19.17 large-format tile and to extend the length of horizontal articulation from 40 feet to 80 feet on the west and south-facing elevations. The Overlay Board recommended unanimous approval, seven to nothing, on August 1st, 2023. And it is recommended that the City Council approve the two alternative standards as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Lutke available for questions. There are no questions or comments. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to, move to approve the two alternative standards as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 12, Consideration of an Ordinance of the City of Lewisville Approving the 2023-2024 Annual Service Plan Update to the Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for Public Improvements for the Josie Lane Public Improvement District with Chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code as amended. On October 6th, 2014, the city created the Josie Lane Public Improvement District for the construction of street and water, wastewater improvements in a designated area located along Josie Lane, north of FM 544 and south of Windhaven Drive. On April 18th, 2022, the city adopted and amended and restated service and assessment plan to amend the initial collection date for Phase Number Two west of the district. The state statutes require an update to the service plan and assessment role be considered and approved by City Council to provide for the annual levy and collection of special assignments. This plan identifies public improvement costs to be provided by the PID, along with the manner of assessing the property in the PID and the assessment role. The plan is required to be recorded with the county clerk within seven days of approval and passage. It is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. And Counsel, I'll entertain any comments or questions? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote.
Oh, Mayor.
Oh.
This is an ordinance of the City of Lewisville approving the 2023-2024 Annual Service Plan Update to the Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for Public Improvements for the Josie Lane Public Improvement District with Chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing repealer severability and effective date and declaring an emergency.
Now, Counsel, you can vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item 13, Consideration and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee, ACSC, and Atmos Energy Corp., MidTex Division, regarding the company's 2023 rate review mechanism filing, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the attached settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable and in the public interest. Approving an attachment establishing a benchmark for pensions and retiree medical benefits, requiring the company to reimburse ACSC's reasonable rate-making expenses, determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, adopting a savings clause, declaring an effective date, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the ACSC's legal counsel and declaring an emergency. The city, along with 181 other mid-Texas cities served by Atmos Energy Corporation MidTex Division, Atmos MidTex or Company, is a member of the Atmos City Steering Committee, ACSC. On or about March 31st, 2023, the company filed a rate request pursuant to the RRM tariff adopted by ACSC members. The company claimed that its cost of service in a test year ending December 31st, 2022, entitled it to additional system-wide revenues of 165.9 million. After application of the standards set forth in the ACSC's RRM tariff, reviewing the filings and conducting discovery, ACSC's consultants concluded that system-wide deficiency under the RRM regime should be 130.9 million instead of the claimed 156.1 million. Following further negotiations, the parties agreed to settle the case for 142 million. This includes payment of ACSC's expenses and an additional 19.5 million for the securitization of regulatory asset expenses related to Winter Storm Uri. The effective date for new rates is October 1, 2023. ACSC members should take action to approve the ordinance before September 30th, 2023. And it is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee, ACSC, and Atmos Energy Corp., MidTex Division, regarding the company's 2023 rate review mechanism filing, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the attached settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable and in the public interests, approving an attachment establishing a benchmark for pensions and retiree medical benefits, requiring the company to reimburse ACSC's reasonable rate-making expenses, determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, adopting a savings clause, declaring an effective date, requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the ACSC's legal counsel and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item G, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Counselmember Kelly, would you mind?
So excited. So, Saturday, we have National Play Music on the Porch Day. We had a proclamation last meeting about this. I'll post my home address on my Facebook groups. Anybody wants to come out, happy to do so. Happy to have you over at my house. We also have a couple of things going on in the city. So, we have Old Town Brass at Thrive. I'm not sure what time that starts. What time does that start, Stacy? 10? Fantastic. So, anyway, if you've got a guitar, harmonica, hum, kazoo, sing, whatever, go on your porch, make some noise. Come to my house, go to Thrive, enjoy the music. But it's going to be a lot of fun. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselmember Green?
No report.
Counselmember Jones?
Hello, everyone. It's about that time of year again for Citizens University to get started up. The deadline is August 31st. Have you ever thought, what are these guys doing? That's what got, that's what started me. My question was, why don't we have things that we can do in the city of Lewisville? Why do I have to go out of the city? And so, I came here, and TJ was here, and Mayor Yooker was still sitting where TJ is now, and they were working on the three restaurants. So, you know, there's always something going on. City government never moves as fast as you want. And if you're interested in learning how city government works, why we do some of the things we do, why it takes so long to do some of these things, so long to do some of these things, you can thank, thank the state of Texas for a lot of that. But you can come learn about it. You can come meet, meet our great staff who will teach you about city operation from public safety to the less heralded, but all more, all the more important public works. You can learn about the parks. You can learn about everything. So make sure you go online. The deadline is the 31st. Just put in Citizens University and apply today. Think that's a good sale. Was that a good sale?
That is great. You did great. You need to put the Yak in there, too. The Youth Action Committee.
Think you got that one.
Hey, look on the website. We need, we need the youths to sign up.
You gotta do more than that.
I don't have it all in front of me.
Anything else, council member Kate?
No. There's a lot, but no.
There's plenty going on. Council member Raven?
Yes, Mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. GED class for adults Monday and Wednesday, August 21st and 23rd, 5:30 to 7:30. Registration is required to the library computer lab. And all the rest, book club for adults, Tuesday, August 22nd, 6:30 to 7:30. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. And adult board gaming for adults, Saturday, August 26th, noon to 4:00 PM. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. And that's all I've got.
Council member Toreya?
Yes, I have a number of items for the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances coming up. An evening of gazelles, Urdu poetry benefiting Pita Place September 8th. Texas tunes, Stephanie Urbina Jones, presented by the city of Lewisville on September 15th. And as always, on Friday nights, the acoustic jam sessions presented by Visual Art League of Lewisville, which runs from nine, six to nine. Then activities going on at the theater. Garden Secrets Class, Seed Saving and Storage, presented by Keep Lewisville Beautiful on September 7th. Pilates in the Plaza, presented by Pilates in the City Saturdays. Yoga in the Plaza, presented by Blue Anju Studios on Thursdays. And then Tai Chi in the Plaza, presented by Lowell Johnson on Saturdays. And there are three exhibitions going on. Reflections of the West, an exhibition by Robert DeLeone, presented by the city of Lewisville, that runs from September 1st through September 30th. Deep in the Heart of Texas, art by Cross Timbers Artist Guild, presented by city of Lewisville, September 1st through September 30th. And finally, Small Work, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, running from August 20th through September 16th. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. City attorney? City secretary?
No report, Mayor.
No report, Mayor?
No?
Do you have one report today? So on August 23rd, so it's this Wednesday, we have our third installment of the Lewisville Business Connection Series. That's in partnership with the Lewisville Area Chamber of Commerce. So this panel's discussion will focus on nonprofits in our community, and we'll also learn ways to get plugged in to their resources. So it's from 8:30 to, 8:30 AM to 10:00 AM. And the event is free. It'll be located at the Lewisville Area Chamber of Commerce. And all we would ask is that people register, but it's free. So we hope our business partners will come out and learn about resources in our community.
Thank you.
No report, Mayor.
Here we go. It's that time of year where the lake level becomes really interesting.
Yes, sir. So I have a couple of things related to the lake. So today, we are at 86.4% full, 519.06 feet. Put that in perspective, one month ago, we were at 94.8% full. So it's dropping fairly quickly. I want to just remind everyone that we are in stage one water restrictions. That means if your address ends with an even number, your watering days are Tuesdays and Saturdays. Odd number, Wednesdays and Sundays. And commercial is Monday and Thursdays. Friday is no watering.
And I, I would remind folks that if you're out and about and you see sprinklers on, you are more than welcome to use the Our Lewisville app to report it. Sometimes those sprinkler systems are using gray water or other water resources, but we want to do all we can to eliminate or reduce urban drool, which is that stuff, the water that pours out onto the sidewalks and into, into the gutters. So if you can help your neighbors by checking that out, letting them know they've got busted sprinkler heads, all that good stuff, it'd be great.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, just a quick update. The public safety buildings are going great. All the piers are bored. They're done with all that underground stuff. It's still hot. We all know that. Using ice in the concrete daily. Every pore's been starting usually about 3 o'clock in the morning to avoid some of the heat. Our quality control has been working. We had some issues. So the design mix is being changed to up at another 500 PSI to account for some of the, some of the concerns that we've had. We're going to see things that you're going to see. Some internal roadwork is going to start soon. The slabs for the main building should start very soon, and you're going to see the steelwork for the fire station. So all these things are going to be happening. You're going to, things are going to start coming out of the ground fast. We're on the fourth level of parking garage. And we have drone footage. If you want to see a bird's eye view, I can send that out to everybody if you're, if you're interested. So, thanks, sir. It's going well.
Mayor, council, I just wanted to make mention that we still have funding available for the senior rental assistance. The United Way has been on-site at the library on, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays to assist our senior residents through the process, but still funding available. And for the month of September, they will still be at the Lewisville Public Library located at 1197 West Main Street on Tuesdays from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And they'll be going out on-site to some of our locations on Wednesdays. So we're going to send that information out also to, to those locations so that we can continue to finish out using that funding. In addition to that, I wanted to mention Clear the Shelter is still going on till the end of this month. So if anyone is looking for a new friend, free adoptions till the end of this, this month. So we would appreciate you spreading the word. Thank you.
Chief? City manager?
No report.
I want to take just a second. On this Wednesday, we have the mayor's pizza challenge. So there are nine mayors, and I found out, so no pressure, but all the food writers in DFW, so D Magazine, Dallas Morning News, there's four or five of them, are all judges. So no pressure, but half of my points are going to come from donations, so I need you all to donate, because I'm going to need help on the pizza side. Regardless, we're going to have some fun. Nine mayors in the area are raising money. The Motor, what is it? Motor City Pizza. I could not remember the name there for, Motor City Pizza is running the program. So looking forward to seeing who gets crowned champion pizza maker on Wednesday. We also have a lot of other items coming up with Western Days. We have the PBR coming up. So this, it may not feel like fall yet, but it's, it's getting there. For those of you who drink that Fall Spice Blend, that I think is already available, so you all enjoy that. With that, we do have a couple of items for closed session tonight. So in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate, Property Acquisition, and Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, we are going to move into closed session. As there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we are adjourned. It is 8:19.